Yeah, I'm just doing a... I want to do it on my phone. Oh, I see.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, February 13th. I am Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioners Bill Avery and Deb Shore. On my right, Roma Amundson and Chair Jennifer Brinkman. Joining us this morning from the County Attorney's Office is Jennifer Holloway. From the County Clerk's office, we have the County Clerk Dan Nolte and Kelly Lundgren. And from the County Board Office, we have our Chief Administrative... I'm sorry, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Ann Ames. So if you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. Agenda item one, or minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, February 6, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last Board of Commissioners meeting held last Tuesday. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two, or claims, approval of all the claims processed through February 13, 2018.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all the claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three, is special presentations. This is the Commissioners' Award of Excellence's presentations. First, I have a little background. The County Commissioners' Award of Excellence's recognize employees who consistently provide outstanding service and work that demonstrate exemplary personal commitment to Lancaster County. Employees may be nominated for the award based on the following criteria: safety, productivity, loss prevention, customer relations, or valor. Nominations are reviewed by Commissioners' Award of Excellence's Committee. The committee members are representative of the various bargaining units and classified employees. Committee members are Scott Gagnar, Deborah Hafner, Todd Stiskel, Mike Hawley, Dave Chamberlain, and Manette Ganuki. If there are members of Commissioners' Award of Excellence's Committee present, will they please stand and be recognized? In 2017, Lancaster County had 890 regular employees. Ten county employees were honored with the ten-monthly awards represented in 2017. Today, we are honoring an annual winner and an honorable mention winner, and they will both receive a plaque. First, we have the January 2018 winner. This is Dave Haas, County Engineering in the category of Productivity. Dave Haas has been selected as Commissioners' Award of Excellence's winner for January 2018. Dave works as a laborer and began working for the county on June 30, 2007. He was nominated by Pam Dingman, County Engineer, in a category of Productivity. In her nomination, Ms. Dingman states, "For the past year, Dave has spent much of his time assisting the engineering office staff. He has familiarized himself with the phone and computer systems, becoming proficient with both. Dave provides extra coverage at the front desk and aids in a variety of office duties that have previously been covered by two full-time employees, but now is being covered by only one. In addition, Dave has stepped in to help the engineer as needed, including assisting the structural engineer with bridge maintenance programming. The assistance has allowed the office to stay up to date on many everyday tasks and has provided relief for the rest of the already busy staff." Ms. Dingman continues, "As the department has been migrating to electronic records management, Dave has spent a tremendous amount of time helping with the process, scanning at least 4,000 documents over many hours and setting them for the HPRM system. Previously, no one had been scanning documents, and the department had accumulated years and years of records to process into the electronic format. Because of Dave, this enormous task has finally been accomplished. The timing is a contributor that has freed up the rest of the staff and sped up the process of implementing the electronic records management system." In conclusion, Ms. Dingman states, "Dave is always eager to help and ready to take on any task you give him. He is friendly and polite when dealing with public and all his coworkers." For these reasons, we are pleased to award Dave Haas with the Commissioners' Award of Excellence for the month of January 2018.
Good morning. Ron Bohati, Road Superintendent for Lancaster County, and I have the pleasure today to introduce Dave Haas. Just a little bit of background, Dave was in the military from '87 till '07. I was still in junior high when he started. He did start at Lancaster County Corrections from about August '07, about 14 months, and then transferred over to Engineering Department, and he's been with us ever since. So he's in his 11th year now, and he always comes in early, very hardworking. We wouldn't know what to do without him right now, aiding around the office and the shop. And I did ask Dave if this would be all right. I did kind of want to give a thank you to all of our staff that's been working through all the early hours and the weekends to do the snow removal, and Dave's also been part of that. So with all that and everything that Pam has put in there for your proficiency, I thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, you've got to let me talk.
Yes, ma'am.
But I know that you want to give recognition to everyone. Anyway, Dave, I've known you for quite a period of time in one of our previous lives in the military and everything like this, and I wanted to confirm with you that, you know, you served in Afghanistan, excuse me, in Iraq for two tours.
Yes.
And the one thing that I wanted to say is, is that, you know, you've had a tremendous amount of service, not only to the state and to the nation for the 20 years, and we really appreciate that, but you've also given great service to the county, so at all levels, county, state, and federal. And throughout all of this, what you have done at the county in terms of your productivity, in terms of your work ethic, and everything like this, that has been demonstrated throughout your entire service-oriented careers. The one thing I wanted to stress is that a year and a half ago, you were injured, I believe, in a bridge abutment fell off on you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. But you know what? You returned to work as soon as you possibly could, and you were doing this work. You did the work that you could do without hesitation and with complete dedication, and I just want to thank you so very, very much for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Mr. Haas, do you want to respond?
I just want to say thank you to the County Board and management for putting me in for this and being able to represent the county. I'd like to thank my wife, putting up with me for 13 years, Rose, and there's three very, actually four, very special gentlemen. Brian Swabauer, Kip Spear, Jim Kuma. And Curtis Picorni, they're the ones that pulled me out from underneath the bridge. If it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be here.
Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. Tom Powell, this one's for you. Have a good one.
Next is the Annual Award Honorable Mention winner for 2017. This is Kelly Lundgren in the County Clerk's office in the category of Productivity. Kelly Lundgren was nominated by Kerry Forbes in the category of Productivity and won the Commissioners' Award of Excellence for the month of November 2017. Kelly works as a County Record Specialist III in the County Clerk's office and was recognized for going above and beyond to help complete the work of a coworker who was unexpectedly out of the office due to an injury. During that time, Kelly attended extra meetings, created additional agendas, and completed additional minutes without missing any deadlines. She did this all on top of her own job duty, on top of her own job duties and responsibilities.
Corey Beatty, Deputy County Clerk, just want to say on behalf of Dan and I, Kelly, thank you very much for a job well done, not only last year, but the year before and the year before that. We value the work that you do very much and appreciate everything, so.
Kelly, it's my honor to present this honorable mention award to you, and I think I had the honor of presenting it back to you in November. You are one of the people that the County Board works most closely with, but it is amazing that we didn't notice that you were, the staff was down, the public didn't notice you were down as a staff person because you stepped in and had everything running as smooth as a lake without ripples. So we appreciate all you do and think it's wonderful that you were recognized amongst the 10 people who were nominated throughout the year. So you're a pleasure and a joy to work with. Congratulations.
Yes. Covering the board meetings on Tuesday, I do get to see all of the award winners, and I am very flattered that the committee selected me as honorable mention out of all of those. So thank you to Kerry for nominating me and to Dan and Corey for their support. I feel very fortunate because I have a great job and I work with great people, and not just in the clerk's office, but in my position. I have contact with staff from practically all of the agencies in the county, and they are just all terrific to work with. So I am very thankful and very grateful for that. Thank you.
Next is the Annual Award winner for 2017. This is Colt Lathrop, Corrections in the category of Valor. Colt Lathrop works as an on-call correctional officer and began working for the county on May 5, 2016. He was nominated by Aaron Cooper, Corrections Sergeant, in the category of Valor. In his nomination, Sergeant Cooper stated, "On September 11, 2016, Officer Lathrop responded to an emergency call in one of the housing units. An inmate had climbed over the upper tier railing and was trying to, and was tying a sheet around his neck. It appeared the inmate was going to jump off in a suicide attempt. Officer Lathrop was able to prevent the inmate from jumping for nearly a minute before more staff arrived, and they were able to get the inmate safely back to the walkway. Officer Lathrop's quick thinking and action prevented a much more serious incident from occurring."
Brad Johnson, Director, Lancaster County Department of Corrections. A little bit about Colt. He's been with our department for about a year and a half. He's going to graduate in May with a psychology degree, and he's currently in the Naval Reserve, so we really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the Board, it's my pleasure to give you the Award of Excellence to be the annual award winner for 2017, Officer Lathrop. We were all affected and impressed with the account that was given when you were awarded this that month, so thank you so much for your work for the county.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
Mr. Lathrop, would you like to respond?
I just want to thank the Board for recognizing me and giving me this great honor. I didn't really think I'd go this far, but absolutely amazing, definitely speechless, so thank you so much. And then thank you for my, obviously, my Corrections family, we have a great team out there, and couldn't have done it without them, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is proclaiming, February 20, 2018, is 4-H Achievement Day. Karen Wobig, Extension Educator Unit Leader, and Tracy Anderson, 4-H Coordinator.
Good morning. Karen Wobig with the Lancaster Extension Office. We just wanted to say a few words here, but I also have something to give you, and would you, can I present this, or can?
There's just one question.
I know you've seen this before. It's the Neb line, but this happened to be the highlights page. It was back in January, so I just wanted to point that out because it really kind of shows everything that somewhat goes on in our office during the year. And then inside, I placed an impact report that we have used kind of on the university side, and the first impact that you see there has to do with the 4-H program, which is technically why we're here today. So I just wanted to have you note the numbers and things that are affected by your support. And, you know, we say this probably every year, and thank you for supporting the 4-H program and the Extension Office every year, but it is very sincere, and we realize how lucky we are to have the support of our Lancaster County government because it truly makes a difference. So with that, I'll introduce Tracy Anderson, who is the 4-H Coordinator of, in our office. And then also over with us is Kristin Geisert, who technically replaced Tracy when Tracy moved to the educator position that the university supports, you know, funding-wise. And so we are so happy to have Kristin with us, too, and she's just been, done an awesome job, and maybe Tracy will say more on that, but sincerely thank you for your support. So, Tracy?
Yes, good morning. My name is Tracy Anderson. As Karen mentioned, I'm the Extension Educator here in Lancaster County with the 4-H program, and I just really am so thankful that you are, with your support, this past year, we were able to reach nearly 36,000 youth across Lancaster County, and that includes over 1,200 youth in our 4-H Club program, 25,000 in our school enrichment, we have after-school programming efforts, and as a result of our 4-H team's efforts. So I'm really thankful, and on their behalf, I'd like to thank you for that. This has actually a 9% increase from the last year, so we've been really working hard and digging in, trying to find little pockets of areas that we can continue to find, you know, reach our underserved youth across Lancaster County. So thank you, and also, we're very happy that Jennifer Brinkman is going to be at next Tuesday's 4-H Achievement Celebration. Todd, you had the opportunity to do that, and Deb as well, so we really thank you for that, and if you all want to come and see our 4-Hers next Tuesday evening, you're welcome to do that.
And I, because I speak for the Board, and we very much appreciate everything that you do, Karen, you, and your staff do. I mean, yes, you could tell, based off of my experience last year at the 4-H banquet, the recognition event, that there's a lot of enthusiasm among the youth in Lancaster County for 4-H, and I think that that would not be possible without a great team at the Extension Office. So we very appreciate all the work you guys do.
Yep, thank you.
And then, we have a resolution, so if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and go to the correlating item, item number 4A. Mr. Clerk?
This is under New Businesses. This is a resolution proclaiming February 20, 2018, is 4-H Achievement Day.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution proclaiming February 20 as 4-H Achievement Day. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Next is Promotion of the 2018 City-County Employee Wellness Fair on February 28, 2018. Kieran Hubbard, City of Lincoln Wellness Coordinator, and Sue Eckley, Lancaster County Risk Manager.
Good morning. I'm Sue Eckley. We're here this morning to give you some information on the Wellness Fair for 2018. This thing has really taken off. Each year, we have more and more people interested in attending, and we have vendors calling us, and this year, we actually had to turn some people away because we had no more space. So Kieran's going to talk about it. We're going to have over 50 businesses throughout the Lincoln area there. There'll be free food samples, there'll be demonstrations, we'll have fitness, diet, exercise, the whole, the whole gambit. So I'm going to turn it over to Kieran so she can talk about it.
Yes, I'm Kieran Hubbard, Wellness Coordinator. I just wanted to thank you for your continued support for this and for attending and volunteering last year as well. The Wellness Fair does help us achieve our components for the wellness program and addresses the identified health priorities that we have, especially from that health risk appraisal report, what we kind of highlighted a couple weeks ago with those different results, because the vendors that come and the businesses and organizations are all from those identified health priorities of physical activity, stress management, and nutrition. So this definitely addresses what those results were from that report. Last year, it's been, it was successful. We had over about 300 people come, similar to that in even previous years. We had around over 50 vendors come, and that's what we're, what's going to be happening again this year. We have quality vendors coming, and so hopefully, we'll be able to provide quite a bit of information for city and county employees that attend and even the public that's around as well. Aetna will be there. We are able to get their rep there, so people will be able to talk with them face-to-face. Some other benefits providers will be there. We'll have blood type testing, blood pressure checks, hearing screening, that kind of thing, and some others that Sue had mentioned as well. So it should be a fun time, good energy. We kind of take over the building on our, the lobby floors here at the City-County Building on first through third floors from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Wednesday, February 28th, but we really do hope to share some of the different resources from the community to employees and any public who is able to come. It is a free event, so everyone is welcome, and I did bring flyers to share, so if you wanted to check those out. And there's parking available in the north lot, and hopefully, even for the larger vehicles for some of the different city and county employees, parking surrounding the building that they can take advantage of and still attend as well. If there's any questions that people may have, those can come to me or even Sue, and we'll be happy to answer those. I'm just excited, and thank you again for your support.
There's going to be free seated chair massages, too. We might need those. That's right.
Are there any questions?
No.
Thank you so much for, again, putting on, hopefully, a successful Wellness Fair.
There was great swag last year. I left with a big sack of stuff, so. In addition to the food, there's other giveaways.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, can we continue with the agenda? Item 4B, please.
This is a Special Events Permit application from Noah Burke, University of Nebraska-Lincoln Cycling Club, to hold the 2018 Tour De Husker Cycling Race on March 17, 2018.
See the County Sheriff coming up. Good morning, Sheriff Wagner.
Good morning, Sheriff Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. My apologies, and thank you, Commissioner Brinkman, for bringing our attention. We had a little breakdown, so I have recommendations for this event, which was not included in your packet. We have no objections. This has been held in the past at Branch Oak Lake. The club provides traffic control at the intersections, and so we have no objections to this, this permit.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Special Event Permit for the 2018 Tour De Nebraska. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is a Special Events Permit application from David Hatton, Lincoln Triad Club, to hold the State Farm Run on March 24, 2018.
Good morning again, Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. Same situation here, we just didn't get our letter in. We have no objections to this permit.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Special Events Permit for the State Farm Run. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is an agreement between Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Election Commissioner and Steve McClatchy for the delivery of voting machines and other miscellaneous equipment to several polling locations for the primary election to be held on Tuesday, May 15, 2018. The county will pay $58 per polling location for the delivery service.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Stephen McClatchy. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is a recommendation from the Purchasing Department and the Sheriff's Office to order purchase order to GT Distributors, Inc., for tactical gear. The total amount is $24,122.14.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase order with GT Distributors, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4F is a resolution in matter of establishing an open meetings policy for the Lancaster County Board of County Commissioners and the Lancaster County Board of Equalization and the Lancaster County Board of Corrections.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution regarding the open meetings policy for the Board of Equalization and the Board of Corrections and the County Board. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is an agreement with Courtyard by Marriott, Lincoln Downtown, to provide meeting rooms, guest rooms, and various services for the Lancaster County Community Corrections Meeting, beginning June 12, 2018 through June 13, 2018. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Courtyard by Marriott, Downtown. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is licensure renewal application with Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for operation of the Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center, 825 J Street. The county will pay $250 for the renewal license.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the license with the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is a contract with Voss Electric Company doing business with Voss Lighting using State of Nebraska Contract Number 14931 OC to provide light bulbs, ballast, and retrofit kits. The term of the contract is upon execution through January 25, 2019. Pricing will be pursuant to the lead contract. The cost to county is not to exceed $2,500.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Voss Lighting. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4J is an amendment to Resolution Number R-18-8, amending the effective date for Dr. Sonat Roy's salary increase to be effective December 21, 2017, instead of December 19, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the resolution regarding Dr. Roy's salary. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K are amendments to the following contracts for the annual supply of office seating. The amendments renewed the contracts from February 12, 2018, through June 11, 2018. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed $5,400. This includes county contract C-12-700 with AOI Corporation and county contract C-12-702 This includes county contract C-12-700 with AOI Corporation and county contract C-12-702 with Office Interiors and Design.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the two contracts for the annual supply of office seating. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is amendment to county contract C-17-227 with Encompass Corporation for the annual supply of Hallworth office seating. The amendment renews the contract from February 12th, 2018 through June 11th, 2018. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed $5,000.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the contract with Encompass Corporation. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M is an amendment to county contract C-16-69 with Matheson Tri-Gas for the annual rental and service of industrial gases. The amendment renews the contract for an additional one-year term beginning February 11th, 2018 through February 10th, 2019. The cost to county is not to exceed $3,200.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Matheson Tri-Gas. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4N is an amendment to county contract C-17-229 with Your Next Tire for the annual inspection and repair of vehicle lifts. The amendment renews the contract for a term beginning March 28th, 2018 through March 27th, 2019. The cost to county is not to exceed $1,000.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Your Next Tire. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is an amendment to county contract C-17-378 with Midwest Sound and Lighting, Inc. for the hall justice courtroom audio replacement. The amendment extends the contract for one month beginning February 1st, 2018 through March 1st, 2018, and reflects additional services being provided. The cost to county is not to exceed $2,344.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the contract with Midwest Sound and Lighting. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is a grant contract with Family Violence Council in amount of $64,251 for the continued operation and improved community response to sexual assault and legal advocacy relating to protection orders and immigrants in Lancaster County program. Term of the grant contract is October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2019.
Good morning, Sarah, Director of Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This is a contract that was with the Family Violence Council. It coordinates our efforts and improves our efforts in handling sexual assault cases and victims filing for protection orders. It provides funding for a coordinator for these efforts. For the current year, we're focusing more on addressing sexual assaults on campus and then also partnering with our cultural centers and reaching out to new refugee and immigrant families who are experiencing domestic violence or sexual assault.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the Family Violence Council. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4Q is reapportment, reapportment of Ed Wappel to the Lancaster County Board of Zoning Appeals for a term commenced in April 1st, 2018 and ending March 31st, 2023.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Ed Wappel to the Lancaster County Board of Zoning Appeals. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. R is appointment of Gwen Thorpe to the Lancaster County Keno Human Services Prevention Fund Advisory Committee. For the three-year term commenced in January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2020.
And the Keno Advisory Committee is a committee that has representatives from both the city council and the county board. And then, the city can nominate three citizen appointees, and the county gets three citizen appointees, too. It oversees about $200,000 in prevention funds from the Keno, administering Keno. Gwen wasn't able to be here today. She has maintained her connection with a lot of the human service agencies, and so, she has a meeting today with the food bank that conflicts with this. Otherwise, she would be here. But we are very fortunate to have her as part of this committee. Her experience with human service agencies and with government operations is invaluable and will be a great asset on our Keno Committee.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Gwen Thorpe to the Lancaster County Keno Human Services Prevention Fund Advisory Committee. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number five are consent items. Receive and place or file the following reports for January 2018. Assessor Registered Deeds, Clerk of the District Court, County Clerk, Records and Information Management. Standing public hearing on Tuesday, February 20th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding the Lancaster County Rural Transit Project for which financial assistance is being sought from the Federal Transit Administration pursuant to the Federal Transit Act.
Move approval of the consent items. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.